Rachel Chalasty.
Yeah.
Gladys Cooper.
Here.
Rich Hawley.
Here.
Richard Genelli.
Here.
Pat Johnson.
Here.
Fred Corret.
Here.
Kathy Malina.
Yeah.
Manuel Ramirez.
Here.
Marley Santos.
Here.
Amy Spolino.
Here.
2018 Schools of Distinction. Good evening, everyone. We have another wonderful end to the school year. We have three schools that have achieved Connecticut Schools of Distinction Awards. It's really a hard thing to get. There's one called Great Something Other. Uh, Great, uh, Great Point, yes. And Smith, would you stand up and introduce your team quickly?
This is Dr. Great Point Staff. We have Mrs. Midler, fifth grade teacher. I'm your specialist, Ms. McAvoy. Our special education class teacher. This is Amy Inlee. We have to hand back our social worker, which is a parent in the fifth grade. We also have Mr. Vala, senior self-special educational teacher. Our support staff here with Mrs. Vala. And our parent, guardian for our children and grandma. My best interest, Dr. Lee.
Need to know that Keisha was called like every twenty minutes. She's making, 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 because of all your armpit issues. Thank you very much. Some schools are greedy. We have Millridge Primary who won last year as a ten.
We're shooting for the third. Yes, we have a couple of our teammates that are lost in the area trying to find a parking place. So, that would be Michelle Figurito, our kindergarten teacher. And Mrs. Whitko, our language arts support staff leader. Okay, we do have two third grade teachers. Catherine Raniole. And this is Kristen Durso. And I just want to say one thing.
Can you leave the door open?
Uh, we...
Can you leave the door open, please?
The door open, please.
Thank you.
Uh, I just want to say, most people say, "You did a great job and pat yourself on the back." I'm patting these people on the back and everyone else on the school site because it takes K all the way through to make something like this happen. So, along to you, thank you. I accept the honor, but they deserve the honor. Thank you.
And last but not least, Dr. Pasquale and I were over at South Street School today and we're reviewing school improvement plan and the progress that was made. And we met with Mrs. Rivera and some remarkable growth is taking place in the school. So, it's not surprising that they too were named the school of distinction again for the second year in a row.
As Dr. Conan said, I cannot take the credit for this. I have two representatives here, Mr. Fay, our fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Keenan, the second grade teacher. The rest of the people are over at Rogers Park at the basketball game. So, we're gonna scoot out of here and go to the basketball game to play. It's the teachers versus the students, so we gotta win. But, thank you, thank you very much. We're honored.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I want to thank the board for giving us opportunity. And of course, each staff member. So, thank you and give us this chance tonight to say thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, before we go to public participation, we're gonna change the agenda a little bit.
Bye!
Chairman's report early because we have some information that needs to be stated before the public participation. So, first, let me read this. I got information as I promised some of the people regarding the public participation from the previous meeting. From our usual public hearing announcements, and I'll begin with some excerpts from our outside counsel. But as I promised the people at the last meeting, I would look into the legality of what we can and cannot discuss. I have made an attempt to be as transparent as possible, as promised, although much of the investigation is being conducted by an independent investigation team. Some information has been requested by and published by the local media. No information has been repelled from the public and then granted to the media despite them. The information garnered was under the Freedom of Information request and the release was required as a matter of law. And our house, our in-house legal and human resources department acted in all matters in a manner to protect the students and the employees and thus the entire district from violating anyone's rights. Now, the following is from outside counsel, so ask that people listen carefully to the explanations and understand that this will be our guideline to conducting the public comment portion. Each person will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes. The total of public participation at the meeting will be no more than thirty minutes. And this is from our counsel. In discussing the matter with Mr. Johnson, we're aware of the emotional situation confronted. I understand that the concern that the board should not be hearing from the public on a matter that might go to a hearing in which the board members would serve as an impartial judge. However, in weighing the constitutional rights of the speakers against concern for due process, I think that it would be appropriate to draw the line at prohibiting public comment at a point where which proceedings are pending. Establishing bylaws and otherwise determining procedures for conducting meetings, boards of education have a significant discretion. While the public has the right to attend its meetings, for example, the Board of Education does not have to permit the public to participate in meetings. Many boards of education provide through policy or by law that the public will have the right to make comments to the board, usually at the beginning of the meeting. However, there is no legal obligation to do so. While boards of education must hold their meetings in public, they are not public meetings. If a board of education chooses to hear from the public, as is common, it must do so in a constitutional manner. Board of education meeting is a public forum and thus speech requirements apply to public statements at board meetings. Once a board of education has created a public forum, it may not pick and choose from among speakers on the basis of which viewpoint they express. Board of education can adopt reasonable restrictions as to time and manner of speech. At their meetings, board of education can require that speakers sign up to speak. For example, they can adopt the rule that each speaker will be allowed no more than, say, three minutes to speak. Boards generally acting through their chair can also require that speakers adhere to a reasonable standard of decorum as provided in Robert's Rules of Order. The chair may require that speakers be courteous, avoid personal attacks, and refrain from the use of vulgarity and the like. All such requirements must be imposed with an even hand without regard to the viewpoint as opposed to the manner of the individual's speech. No speaker at a board meeting, a board of education meeting, however, has the First Amendment right to be disruptive or rude. With that said, that's our new parameter for how we're going to allow people, basically allowed to say what they like, as long as they do it in a courteous and well-mannered way. Three minutes per person to speak, thirty minutes total. If you speak less, more people can speak. But that's our basic criteria. We do not want to inhibit people from stating their views. And we've gone to counsel to find that out. We just ask that, you know, people don't get out of hand and people be respectful of the people that are involved and try not to certainly, please, do not mention students' names. Try and keep your comments, especially in that regard, to avoid any problems with that. That's very bad. Okay, with that being said, we're gonna address the public participation. I don't know if everybody who wanted to speak signed up, but I will ask at the end if anybody else wanted to. And with that, we're gonna start with Bob Evans.
So, I'll try to toe the line here. Just let me know if it's out of control. So, good evening. My name is Bob Evans. I know many of you have sent, I know I've sent many of you various emails concerning my son's teacher in the Broadview Steps program, so I want to be sure to put my face with those emails. So, I am Bob Evans, so you guys have been getting emails from me. I want each of you to understand our faces to all the comments and hopefully take the time to read those comments that you guys have been sending. Each name and comment that you read about comes from someone who's been impacted by the incredible reach that BH has brought for so many years. His efforts and accomplishments have finally been recognized, being only special education teacher in the entire state of Connecticut, awarded Teacher of the Year by the National Association of Special Education Teachers. Is this a coincidence? I think not. But that piece of paper that was delivered to his wife on his behalf in a very uncommon valor-type of presentation is not what he is remotely concerned about. Knowing him, it's the many kids and the young adults that sit behind him tonight showing their support that he would be most proud of. A simple opportunity to have a voice and respect that they deserve. Please look around this room and see those faces that I speak of, and they are the ones who have been given an opportunity to be successful because of great teachers like BH. We, as their parents, have forced to endure a very tumultuous year. However, we remain steadfast that BH is the perfect leader that we want all of our children to follow, and they deserve that opportunity. Thank you.
Daryl Smith.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Smith and my son Cleberson is back here. Wait for everybody. He's a student at Broadview Middle School in the special education program. You may remember me from the last meeting where attempts to raise concerns about a situation involving my son's classroom were abruptly halted at the request of your counsel. We were told this was not the form to discuss these concerns despite the fact that there was no expectation of having a discussion, merely reading statements to inform you. I'm not clear how a member of the public reading a statement to the board without a response constitutes a discussion, but I guess a good lawyer can redefine anything however they see fit. Regardless, we were told that we should wait to speak with you after the meeting, which we did. I personally spoke to several of you and briefed you on some of my concerns. I also want to acknowledge that Dr. Pasquale called you the day after the meeting along with several others on the line in response to my mentioning that a call from a couple weeks earlier had not been returned, so I want to thank you for that. The evening after the meeting, I composed a more detailed email which I sent to each member of the board the next day. I am disappointed that not a single member of the board has so much as acknowledged my email, so I have brought a printed copy of the text of that email tonight in case you never received it, but a response would be appreciated. Otherwise, it's still not a discussion, just like talking to a wall. Thank you.
Teresa Lopez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Teresa Lopez. I am the mother of Jason Lopez, the loud one over there. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Okay, I actually have something that's way too long, but I still wanted to submit it anyway, and I have copies for each of you, but I'm just gonna read a small section of what I prepared for this evening. BH is a loving, caring, passionate, devoted, creative, innovative teacher. He has taken the special needs program at Broadview Middle School and has transformed it into something extraordinary. The Steps program has the perfect balance of life skills academics. He is resourceful, he has resourcefulness to customize lessons to fit each unique student. BH's classroom is not the type of classroom where you send your special needs child to basically be babysat while they read for their scheduled therapies like speech, PT, and OT. BH is teaching students invaluable life lessons like cooking, cleaning, recycling, gardening, sports, and interacting with the typical population. My son has been treated like a young adult in this class. In the process, my son has matured and developed into an independent individual. I can say at home, he is independently, takes out the garbage, takes care of recycling, puts the hampers away after the laundry's done, puts the dirty clothes in the hamper, tries to help with meal preps, and he also has just started reading people in public appropriately. I never thought my son would be at the level he is at now. I have no doubt that it would not have happened without BH's expertise. BH is not only a teacher, he's a role model, a volunteer, an outstanding member of the community, a leader and an interleader in this field. He is a teacher that all other teachers should set their standards by.
Jonathan Chinger.
My name is Jonathan Chinger. A teacher at Broadview Middle School, then involved in the unified sports for the past three years. That is where I met Mr. H. Mr. H has taught me how to be confident and how to be a team leader. He has taught me how to be the value of inclusion for all people. I will carry his lessons with me throughout my life. Thanks.
Dear Boyer Education, my name is Peter Chinger. I am a sixth grader in Broadview Middle School. I've been in the fight towards early year, but I know in that period of time, I know that Mr. H is a good man. He taught me to be a responsible person and I don't matter what you look like, and everybody should be treated with kindness.
Good evening. My name is Lori, and I am a parent. I was there with her from primary to kindergarten. I come forward tonight seeking clarification of certain procedural or operational issues concerning the operation of Danbury Public Schools. First, I would like to point out that my son, Paul, has been a recipient of exceptional special educational services for most of his time while a student of the Danbury Public Schools. My husband and I are very appreciative to all the teachers and aides who have been so supportive of him and our family as we've worked over the years to make his future as positive as possible. And that is my point. It takes a team to work to make special education, and in fact, any education, to work and be as effective as possible. We, the parents, need to know that the administration is also a member of that team and is truly working with us and not against us. Most parents feel that the current policies of the Special Education Department is completely at odds with what should be in the best interest of our students. Therefore, I am requesting that the board take the time to do its investigation into the current policies of the Special Education Department of the Danbury Public Schools. This investigation is within your mandate and Danbury Public Board of Education by Law 3.1 under the rule of board members' general duties number three. Second, you, the board, are also given a specific power and duty, I quote, "to establish the policy of employment, promotion, and dismissal of personnel in accordance with the state statutes." That is also found in the bylaw of General Duties number five. In doing my research, I could not find any additional information regarding this power or the district's current policy. Therefore, I would like to know what the current policy of employment, promotion, and dismissal is. Third, as a continuation of that point, the Board of Education has the authority to hire the superintendent of schools according to the Board of Education by Law 3.1, number two. I would wonder who can initiate investigations to conduct in competency of an administrator, who has the power to fire a superintendent or any other member of the administration? Fourth, I understand that Ms. Thomas is the Director of Human Resources and District's Counsel. My question is whether that is an inherent conflict of interest and whether Ms. Thomas should recuse herself as advising counsel in any proceedings involving employee-related issues. I would like to know if there is an existing authority for her acting in both capacities. And I would like to point out to the Board of Education members that they do have the authority to seek outside counsel, which apparently you have already done. Finally, I would like to present the board and Dr. Pasquale with a printed copy of a petition that I sponsored on behalf of the T-shirt in your district. The petition I initiated was not only seventy-two hours ago, and it currently has more than two hundred and seventy signatures and numerous comments. I ask that you please read it. We'll hand it out.
Katherine Souza.
My name is Katherine Souza. I'm here to talk about recess. Why? Because kids shouldn't be stuck inside all day. According to American Heart Association, research shows it will actually help them learn better in school. The six schools focus so much on testing and student performance, given them, given or provided anything that could help us be better on those state tests. According to ICPA, recess increases focus. If recess increases focus, focus increases good grades, which makes the students feel good about themselves. According to the circle most, but it helps with their behavior. Some kids like to move around and get out of their seats, but once they do, they get in trouble, all because they need to move around. That's not fair. We understand our abilities are jam-packed with learning. To help us learn more, we need your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Tasio.
I'm a tutor at DHS, and I was here speaking a few meetings ago, concerned with a lack of security by East Gate Park entrance to the high school. Since then, thank you. We now have a police park there to help us feel safe. The last week, we had lockdown, and I was at lunch in the teacher's cafeteria, huddled on the floor with tons of teens because they had to leave the big part of the cafeteria and come into the teacher's cafeteria. Some were crying because they knew it wasn't a drill, or at least at that moment, we didn't know what it was. We thought it was for real. Some were crying, some weren't taking it seriously, and they were fooling around, but we were all on the floor scared. But my question tonight is, I know, I'm wondering if there's a plan in place for more security. I know we have those six states, we have the kids that are unarmed, and the two that are armed, police officers inside the school, and now we have that one police car outside, but we still have that open access, and it's an open, easy access to thousands of students and staff. I just really am still concerned about that.
Worth that, worth the open access?
East Gate Park.
Oh, the East Gate.
Yes.
Yes.
That is everybody on the list. Is there anybody who did not write their name down who wanted to speak? Please say your name.
Mary Jane Corboni. Hey, I tried to apologize to each different material that is here. So, hello, Dr. Sal, Board of Education. My name is MJ Corboni. Also, I have sent emails for you, also to you. I'm here to thank my, part of my family, my husband, Vinnie, my daughter, just for one of Danbury's most extraordinary teachers and community members, BH. And my mother, two girls in the Danbury District, not specialty, but my daughter is currently a seventh grader of Broadview, the other one is in eleventh grade. Over, I just want to say, over thirty-four years in my business of professional life, I worked with many, many different types of people. Without question, for many reasons, BH is one of the best people I've ever had the opportunity to get to know and work with. We've come here to, based on the news that if BH is no longer at the Broadview, which is very disturbing to all of us. Unquestionably, I know BH would never do anything that wasn't in the best interest of his kids, and by his kids, I mean the wonderful students followed him. If BH is guilty of anything, it's only for caring about his kids so much, always putting the interest of his kids over his and for having a big heart. Always. That's one of the many, many types of qualities that makes him such an incredible teacher and person, just so unique and exceptional. One of the best things about Broadview has been BH. To me, Broadview is BH's Broadview and competency as all the teachers do, and we'll tell you the same thing, all of the parents that you've heard from. I hear stories all the time how he's seen, achieved family dynamics. He's transformed lives, not only his kids, but of his kids' families. Quite simply, he's a rock star. Special agent, he's had it impacted every single child in Broadview. And in Stellawrath Elementary School, with my children, whether it's as a sound monitor at the elementary town, elementary school town show, or as a leader of Broadview Student Council, or as the unified sports moderator, or as the one who puts on all the Broadview dances, or even just with Big Guy in the hallway at Broadview with the ponytail and the loud booby voice. He has a very unique way to make every kid in that school feel special, safe, and welcome. He actually loved me too. He would always make a point to let me know how my girls were doing at school, and they were smiling in the hallway. I couldn't ask him too, but because he just wanted to, I completely trust him looking for my girls. I have known BH and his wife personally for eight years, and I've worked with him many times at fundraisers, special events at Stellawrath Elementary School, especially in my role as PTO president a few years ago. He is a passionate, caring, phenomenal teacher. I can state my reputation on the title of person he is, no questions or doubts whatsoever. He's a gift to teaching, he's a gift to Broadview and our community. And selfishly, I feel there's a huge hole at Broadview, my daughter goes, and in our community right now that can't be filled with anyone like him. And more importantly, there's been a terrible state thing, and the life and life of an exceptional, inspirational member of our family and our community to be destroyed. So, I ask all of you, please, help support us and be a part of our people. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who did not put their name on the list that I would like to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you so much for your participation. Yes, if you would like to, Corboni, if you'd like to bring that up and have it submitted into the record? Thank you. Okay. Moving to the dissent calendar. The Board of Education approved the item on the dissent calendar, except it's eighteen dash seven four through eighteen dash seven five as recommended. Excited by Mrs. Malina. Any discussion? Any discussion on motion? Are none? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Restained? Okay, spotlight your score. New Street School. You ready?
What are you doing? Right there.
First, thank this opportunity to highlight some work that we've done at King Street Campus. I'd like to congratulate the, our fellow schools, our school distinction. We worked hard to achieve that next year, so we will see to be at the table. We like to collaborate with our other schools, and we like to also thank Rachel and Amy for coming out and mentoring us. I think she meant a lot to us, the time to tour our school, and see what we were about, and not just on paper, but to feel and see the kids doing, and stuff, so thank you a thousand times. And I invite anyone who has some time to do this for the day. Just to highlight, we'll start off with introducing King Street Campus. We have two buildings, as you know, on campus, a primary and intermediate, and then we have, like I call it, I like to call it sister school, Mill Ridge, as they feed it to our intermediate building. We have eight hundred and thirty-seven students on campus, and we just had our last, we had someone enroll just this week, and we have another student next week coming in, so students keep coming. Today, I'd like to highlight a few themes, starting with curriculum, some work that we're doing with character, community, creating opportunities, and ways to communicate. For curriculum, we're spending a lot of time working in our grade-level teams around pacing, making sure that we are not spending too much time on some things and neglecting others, making sure that our teams are able to collaborate with one another. And I took some time to just draw a little circle here, because we've been spending a lot of time on that important planning together, implementing, assessing, and monitoring. It just says my colleague said before, it's because of the work of the team and the teachers that makes the difference. I think that we are our best resources. The assessment of students is also an important piece in our collaboration and working together, and starting with just observing what's going on in the classroom, and then, of course, all the other assessments, like STAR for PA, ONTANs, and lynch marks. But as we're doing this work, just as other schools are doing, we're also taking a look at what, what interventions that we have in place, and I'm very thankful that this year, that we've had the Title I funds that have provided us the opportunity to have some interventions come into the building to help out, few extra hands with students, as well as really differentiating the instruction. We think that the curriculum that you have provided us enables us to differentiate for all the needs of the class, and it's really important to us, because as kids come into, even kindergarten, they're coming in at such different levels, that it's important that we're doing that differentiation. We have been given new materials that we've been using, in particular, our fourth grade, we've been doing the investigations, it's new writing units, and that falls into the grade-level teams. And a huge focus for us has been the working on building volume of students in their writing and their reading, increasing their stamina so that they can last a long time to do that work, and independence, finding that just write book, and really making sure that we're communicating that with the students and the parents of, it's not just freezing through the book, it's really understanding that, addressing the levels. The next theme is building good character, so we can spend some time. And our stripes, and we have our stripes at our school, investigating the students on campus, they certainly are billable, they have our safety, teamwork, respect, integrity, pride, personal best, empathy. We had, in the last, last year, we had, we had a, this school came up with a school pledge, and just at the end of last year, when Mill Ridge came up, we were able to use our pledge with their morning exercise, another piece of integrating our sister school into the intermediate building. New to the campus this past year, we wanted to highlight and recognize students who have good behaviors, doing what they can do, following their stripes. And the teachers were given the opportunity to nominate one or more, but mainly one, twice, twice a month, students to have lunch with Mrs. Gallagher and I. And they would talk during lunchtime, enjoy their company, and we, we did, we talked about why did you receive the award, and we also talked about doing the right thing, Peter Wineman was wanting. We totaled it up, we had twenty-eight days of lunch, and maybe a hundred and twelve lunches, and we ate lunch with six hundred and eighty students. That's a lot of lunch. Community time, we did whole group, community times in grade levels, we did whole group in the entire buildings, the primary building, the intermediate building, and our social workers have gone into the classrooms as well to kind of teach into what it takes to have a community. We infused the say hello from the district, we also brought in Ben's bells and kindness. We talked to kids about how to be a friend, how to respect others, and how to really understand ourselves and our own feelings, and be able to self-regulate ourselves, and how that is so important for all students. In the hallways, if you're familiar with the building of the primary, it's all open classrooms, and also with the intermediate as well, we follow the tone zone. It was something that developed this year. It helps us show each other how to be respectful of one another while we're learning. And during lunchtime, they also have the opportunity to show their tone zone, we start from zero being no toys and five being like super loud. And the students who are recognized receive iPods, and then they actually earn, get this, our school mascot in their classroom, which they really work hard for, just a simple reminder of just how they appreciate being recognized for doing what they're supposed to do. Students in the classrooms can also earn some tiger time, they earned time when they were doing the right thing for each day. The teachers had the discretion on how to use that tiger time, whether they wanted to, mainly in the primary building, they used it each day for ten minutes at the end of the day, if they earned it. And it was a nice sort of carrot and tool, gave some students some extra recess time, if you will, or just time to do what they wanted to do. And, you know, sometimes the students, they like to be able to earn something, and so this was a nice way to recognize students who knew what they needed to do. And some of the intermediate teachers felt that the students were able to earn it over time, so pride would be the big time to earn. Finally, in regards to building character, there's two other awards we had, it's still being passed away two years back now, and we have also the Honor Tim's for fifth graders, and also this year too, we have a Golden Tiger Award that will be given to fifth graders. Again, all emphasizing good behavior and also building that character, because we need to do that together. So, we also have, we've been working really hard on our community connection. And our biggest work, and it's important for the board to know, to meld the schools together, you know, KSP, MRP is KSI. We've spent time on this, since Mill Ridge Intermediate had closed several years back, and we try to do more and more things with the third grade, so once they get into fourth grade, that transition has lessened. We've done PEPALs, Mrs. Gallagher and I have done parent outreach nights, we've gone to Mill Ridge PTO, we've had transition nights where we've invited the upcoming board graders to tour our building. The students from each building come and take tours during the day, so if their parents weren't able to get there in the evening, we've done that. Then, that's when we also have the student introductions, and it's really nice, because when we're having the lunches together, talking to the kids about the, the transition when they got to their fourth graders, and the fifth graders report that they still remember who their PEPAL was, and they remember person meeting them, and I just love that that meant that that was important to them. Finally, I'd like to recognize that our PTO board actually created a position unique to King Street, and that is a liaison position, because they too value the melding of the two schools. And so, the next full year, soon to be voted, will be someone who can have a board position, and they will be able to help build that connection, be that liaison. So when new parents come in, they, they feel very welcome. With our Title I money, we have had some welcome dinners and programs, really highlighting our ESL students. Some of our families felt a little uncomfortable coming to an English session, so those sessions were done in Spanish and Portuguese, and they asked for the basics, you know, about attendance or about homework, how to help their child. The next session was based off of what they wanted, they wanted to know a little bit more about technology, how do they protect their children in those regards. Again, our PTO was very supportive, helping us with those dinners, and are very appreciative. All families were, of course, invited to grade-level parent nights, our last one was just last night. We have reading partners, therapy dogs, JF readers, mentors, and field readers, so we welcome the community to help and read with our kids. And we've also reached out to our middle school. All three middle schools have had some students come to King Street, we needed some help doing some things, copying, some blue and cutting, that sort of thing, and they came after school and had community hours, which I appreciate, and so it was nice to have the, some were King Street alumni, and others were just friends, and they came and helped out, that was nice, as well as West Palm. And finally, I decided if you wanted to come up and say a few words.
It's too stressful.
Okay, I don't want to stress here, but our parents, our parents are very helpful, and stemming from Mrs. Rumpel's, Lisa, she started clearing out and beautifying our campus, and then it evolved into something much larger, and it's called Campus Cares. They do donations, they work on our environment, always showing respect in our community, and then they're actually be presenting, the fifth graders will be presenting to the rest of the school on what they've done, because we think that if you have the opportunity to help and volunteer, that you will be more likely to do that as you're older, because it just feels good to help.
No, I mean, that's the gist, it's a, it's a volunteer, it's on volunteer basis, you know, really kind of focusing just on the fifth graders, since they're sort of the elders of the campus. And we're just trying, you know, throughout the year, we do a variety of projects that are local and global issues, and we kind of, it's my first year, so it's kind of organically, you know, growing, but we did a long list of things this year, and I'm really excited about it, because it's a great job.
See, watch I. Gwen's going to talk about the opportunities.
Thank you very much for having us, thank you for, Mrs. Katniss, who came out with us tonight, our teacher, and we have the parents here, we had one of our interventions here earlier today, so I'm just going to sit there and be doing my thing, but thank you. I have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the opportunities that here at King Street, that we provide to our students. So the first one is the geography. We had actually a student in fourth grade go on to compete at the state level. So again, these are things that are coming from our parents, like Mrs. Rumpel, she started as campus parent, it's something she was passionate about. So a few years ago, we had a parent passionate about geography, and asked, can I start this up? So some of these are from, you know, stem from parents. Another opportunity to our students is the invention convention, our kids are getting involved in that, and again, so excited, we had last year kindergarten go on to the national level, he actually won an award for his no cat or egg collector. This year, we had another student, a fourth grader go to the nationals, went out to Minnesota, Michigan, and was able to present her hat collar. So it's just so exciting to get these new opportunities that we're able to offer, and again, a lot of this is thanks to the support of the parents. Again, something that came from a parent was obviously of the mind, the last two years we participated in that, down at Southern Connecticut State University. Again, last year, kids were recognized with the Omar Award for being good sports, this year, one of the teams really presented well, and he came in second or third place. So again, these are opportunities that are offered to all our students on campus. We welcome ideas. Oh, yeah, I got it, yeah, yeah, so we do, it's been a long day, but she just came back from New York City, in case you're wondering, the fifth grade class, I think it's all a lot, and so, but yeah, we always welcome ideas from our parents, because they really are the ones that are going to start some of these things that are new and exciting for our students. And then, our PTO, thanks to our PTO, we have so many opportunities on campus, they fund our assemblies, they give us stuff in the school, we've got our Meridian boards, they bought us iPads, and again, it's all in support of the students and their learning, they help us with our field trips, so we're very fortunate for our PTO. So the last theme of the evening is communication. So we do a weekly robopoll every week, that includes just things that are coming up, and it's in Spanish and Portuguese for our families. We have the opportunity to use language links, thank you to the district for providing this program to us, it's a way for us to communicate with our families in any language that they need, so if we call, and we need to communicate a little bit more deeper on some of the things that might be going on, we use language links, and we're able to have those conversations. If a parent comes in and we need to clarify something, we use that program, so thanks to the district for providing that, because that really opens up a lot of opportunities for us to have those clear communication with our families. So we also started this year, talking to the administrators before PTO, so Dr. Slav and I are at the pre-PTO meetings, and just to come in and talk, and find out what's going on, how are you doing, what's going on, questions you have for us, so they open those lines of communication with our families. We have our PTO, we have two PTO meetings a month, the one that happens in the evening, and then again, they shoot our parents, they said we need to have a second one offering to parents that aren't able to make the night one, so we also have one in the morning that's hosted at, often at King Street Intermediate, and just a recap of the night before, so again, we go back to that idea of really getting the support from our parents, because we're a team, we work together. We, for communication with our parents this year, we use the STAR report, we brought them out, and really, you know, it gives us opportunities to talk to them about how their children are doing, it's one data point we use, but again, it opens up that line of communication, so we can really clearly identify and discuss how their child's doing. We have the, we were one of the ones that piloted this new standard-based report cards this year, so we're really working with our families on how to understand, you know, where their child is, it's very specific, and it really goes into deeply about how they're doing in the different areas, in reading, writing, math, and their behavior. So it's been a really great tool, we've learned a lot from them, I think it's a, it's a much better way for parents to know how their child's doing. We have a, what, four times a year, fall, winter, spring, and then, you know, end of year, Roar, a newsletter that goes home, and just kind of highlights some of the things that are going on, just to, again, that idea of communicating, it is in Spanish and Portuguese also, we make sure it goes home there. It is in Spanish and Portuguese also, we make sure it goes home there. And finally, our Twitter account. So we do tweet out as much as possible, and that's how we want to kind of end our evening tonight. We kind of wanted to just kind of recap our year through Twitter. And we're going to go from backwards to forward. So we're going to start from today. You're going to see some pictures from our New York City trip. They went in, went to the fifth grade, went into Central Park and had lunch, and then they went over and saw Aladdin. You'll see, we also have, you'll see a beautiful picture, we have a mural that's going on. Our art teacher brought in an artist and so he started this wonderful mural that's allowing the kids to leave their mark on the campus. So they are leaving this morning. We had 207 kids going on and volunteers going on this field trip. And it was successful. Everyone came back too, so we're excited for that. Yes, that's the other thing. Last night, we did our parent reading engagement night for summer, so we have those for highlighting. We did it both buildings by grade level, just to talk about how do they make sure that their kids are working over the summer so they don't lose anything. Yesterday, fourth grade, one of the fourth grade clusters went to New Pine Farm, so that was exciting. Again, thanks to Mrs. Katynski, she put that together. So again, there's some more reading nights. There's our mural artists get a chance, it's just beautiful the work he's doing. Just, the kids are leaving their mark on the campus when they leave and they come back with their, have a younger siblings. I was part of that last year, so we're excited. Last week, we had our Ace Claim Social. The teachers come out and scoop for the kids and they love that, it was a great event. And yearly, again, PTO was running that, they always have a great time. We had our concerts. We had, if you get a chance, look at this because you will see, one thing that makes us unique at King Street is we have our music teacher, Mr. O'Grady at King Street Intermediate, got some grants from Little Kids Rock. And he's brought in teaching the fourth graders the ukulele, how he refers to it, ukulele to me. And then for the fifth grader, he's now transitioning them to guitars. So they're learning how to play ukuleles and guitars to get them ready. And it's amazing the work. So if you get a chance, you can hear the kids just playing and strumming along. We do have a garden at our, on our campus that second grade really has fostered and really grown. They've got strawberries going on, being planted. They started things from seeds, and so that's a really nice thing. They're out there many days watering, weeding, you know, I need them at my house personally. We thank our volunteers just recently at a community time, just to say thank you for all the little things you do. If it's coming in to read, if it's volunteering for a trip, you know, all that stuff really is very, we appreciate it so much. Here, we have our kindergarten orientation, so now we're already starting our thinking for next year. We're excited for those opportunities. We had, here's the picture from transition night with Dr. Cronin and Dr. Hislop, really again, that building that bond between the two schools. We had our third grade concert event. Again, we also have the strings concert. We have some great, we have a band. And our strings, you know, are just wonderful opportunities for these kids. Let's see, you go on, I'm not checking. Another concert we have going on. Here's the transition for, again, those transitions, these are big things for these kids. And kids are coming in kindergarten, the kids that are coming in from third to fourth, these are big transitions for them. And now we've got the fifth graders getting ready for middle school, so they come into our school and teach the kids and talk to the kids about that. So it's, it's another way just for them to kind of ease their anxiety. There's Ellis, there she is. Again, she was the one that went to the state level and then off to the national. We have our Be Kind, we have a future chef's contest. That was a fun activity for some of the students. They made some delicious food. Our WestCon came and helped us out. A couple of our kids, three of our fifth graders were recognized at the Elementary Honors Orchestra in Hartford over spring break. Again, that was a wonderful opportunity. We had some activities coming in for our third grade students. This was, a couple of kids came to me to share their American Revolution writing piece, and so we shared that. Again, there's a nice picture from Mrs. Ruffles, who cleaned our campuses and we see those bloody flowers coming up. You know, we got a grant thankfully from Mobile Exxon, so we got some money for our STEM and our science work. Now here we are in our fifth grade concert. You know, we do concerts for all, all around. We have our internet safety, this is our bilingual evening, an office of payments to those parents. Here's our middle school volunteers helping us with some spring reading activities. There's our second grade girls that came in second or third place in Odyssey of the Mind, their little team. It's all girls, they, they did a great job. There's our other team that participated in Odyssey of the Mind. There's AJ, you can see his picture right there, but he was recognized, he was locally in one of the bigger, like the Harper Current, his article was about, you know, competing in the national geography debate. We have another concert that went on. Let's see, we did, oh, that was part of the concert, they were all excited. Our music teacher likes to do like a little show and it's great. There's, when he won the local, our school event. Again, here's another math and literacy night we did over rough American, we are no needs alone, one of our fundraisers thanks to PTO. There's another, we got some money donated for books, the Jewish Federation readers. Let's see, is this one we have? Oh, we had our, our heart. And then now we're going back to the beginning of the year and we're just learning a little bit about ourselves. We had a service day, and then when we come down, here we see our little, our little kindergartners just up King Stairs, one of their first meetings. And then here we end the year, or start of the year, I should say, with our little kindergartners learning what stripes means to them and welcoming them to our school. So it's been a great year and thank you for your support and for our parents and teachers who come out tonight.
Are the teachers here?
Yes, Mrs. Katynski. Mrs. Katynski, she's fourth grade. And then we have some parents.
Where's parents?
We had, it's just, it's a tough time of year, I think, but we're glad to present, and maybe next time we can present in the beginning of the year too. Wes, little girl. It's pretty hot in here.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Number one, that was very creative, the way it gets presented with that device. What is that called?
It's called a hover cam.
I want one.
Oh. It's a hover cam and we have them in classes. So when teachers want to show their books, they make small, it's a big book, and we can take student work and highlight right there. So it's a hover cam and some other brands are ladybug, but it's from this.
That is cool, that is a really cool use of that, and just I can only imagine how fun that is in the classroom to be able to.
Yeah, kids love to see their own, like, you know, hands, and grab their attention.
Do you know, yeah. Yeah.
Using the, you can actually see it right in time.
Very nice. Thank you for showing us.
The district, again, that's.
I'm trying to draw some change up for you, so.
That was great. We see some PowerPoints, that's good.
Thank you.
This is Dr. T. Deck, I'm sorry, I'm saying.
Hi, Bill.
Yes, hi.
Well, I don't know if that, are you doing an hour-long presentation or are you doing an hour-long? Okay, so before we do the.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we do the action item.
Yeah. Request, requesting a motion to be added to action items to approve the 2018-2019 revised calendar to address the missed 2017-2018 school days.
By Mr. Santos, you have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Hawley. So we're just going to move this to an action item if everybody's in favor and look forward to that. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Just, just okay.
Just okay.
Yeah, just okay.
Yeah, this is only to move it to action. Okay, all those, yes, all those in favor moving it to an action item? Say aye.
Aye.
Close. Staying. Motion passes. All right.
Give me a second.
The Department of Education approved the submission of the WAREACE program enhancement projects grant 18-76.
Mr. Santos, one second, goodbye. Any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Staying. Motion carries.
The Department of Education approved the revised 2018-2019 calendar, as revised on June 11, 2018, to address the missed 2017-2018 school days.
Motion.
Do you want a second?
Yes, second.
Second.
Second, goodbye, Mrs. Molinaro. Any discussion?
So if I could, so the 31st, will that be a full day?
I'll go through it.
No, I mean, we understand as far as the waiver and schools got to come back for one day, but will it be a full day or half day?
That is, that'll be a partial day. We're using that as a first day for teachers. Teachers have, well, after their regular PD day, they have a working day, a working day. We're talking to the teachers. We thought how we're ending this year with that Friday, a partial day for students and the teachers, we would begin next year so that at the end of that day, they would have their full day and the students in the district would make up their 100th PD day. So everybody would have one day made up. The next day, for makeup, we would go to the state. That is a PD day. Students were also coming in, there are only three schools. That would be Hays Town, Broadview, Pembroke. They would come in early and then dismiss and the teachers would be there for PD. At the end of that, they would have made up their two days. So we're all even at that point in this school year. When I went up to the state, I gave a hollow, logical reasons why doing this was going to be problematic. It really didn't matter in terms of making any excuses. They provided the opportunity, say you don't have to make it up. They essentially preferred it next year. So by doing this, we deferred, we have to start before September. The new calendar's all started before September, so that at the end of the year, we're not left with a nominal number of days. The problem that we had, and you need to appreciate this, we're always thinking, we know how many we need to make up in full April. This year, we had tornado and the microwave, after April break. And that is a problem, you can't anticipate that, at least not this quarter of the year. The rest is a little bit different. So what I suggested that we think about, as we thought through this, that your days include the five emergency days. The purpose for doing that is that we're not a module of parents to know when the youngsters are going to graduate. Once you go 185 days, the board's permitted to conduct graduation. After that, after those days, you have to offer the program to the youngsters. So in the calendar, it's 186 days, reflect the extra days. The five emergency days are there. So I thought what we should do is if more than 10 days a week before the April vacation, that we deduct those days from the end of April break. Reason for that, to go up there for the break, the 19th is Good Friday. In the past, we did that, we did that again. That's a legal holiday, having class on Thursday next week, expecting people to come back a day. Doesn't make much rational sense. If we need to, if we need to, you have one PD day in May, and if you go to the 11th day that we, that we did this year, the ESD day, we're going to move. It gives you some insurances that get to the end of the year, you're going to have some days to make up if there's some happenstance that happens after. We did share this, like, obviously, we shared with the teachers union, administrator union, and actually suggested for that Friday. We thought it'd be a little over the top, frankly, and teachers thought that would be, that we were better in terms of this.
Joe, financial, financial impact, Joe?
Complicated. Kim and I are working for respective unions. I'm having a conversation with bus company right now, because obviously, their contract for 180 days this year. We are looking, having a conversation about since paying the 180 this year and then getting a credit back for those days next year. Don't really have a way to do that from a contract standpoint. Obviously, as far as the unions, we're talking about, the conversation's been happening.
Same kind of, a little bit complicated, because all of the contracts, all seven bargaining units have different permissions at them. So I started more or less preliminary conversations. The teachers are the easy ones, that's kind of the net, that they're, we're basically going to just hold each other hard, so one less or two less will exist this year or one more or two next year. But the other groups are a little bit more complicated. Secretaries, for example, who worked well into July this year and come back in the next year. So we're negotiating kind of different resolutions to all of those contracts and have some progress. We're going to kind of keep everybody comfortable.
The only other thing is Columbia State, even with the pandemic.
Right, we may have issued a couple of our unions that have that.
That's possible, it's not that much, but that's enough. And there wasn't any way, I tried to get the state board to think about summer school as ours. Starting July 1st, you could start school, but they didn't buy that. I thought they were at least a labor, the three schools, but they didn't. If you look at it, you can see where February break, you just have one day. You used to have two days, you used to have a day before the Thanksgiving. That's going to be a PD day, Columbia State is, have a work day for the teachers that have been a day off. So we've made some modifications so that we don't have to worry about that.
You kind of answered my question already. My question was, why shouldn't we just add it to the end of the year instead, because the parents are planned, have planned already for the summer? The other thing is, and I know the doctor class stands for the Veterans Day, but I know other districts have school on Veterans Day, and to make it meaningful, more meaningful for the kids to come in on that day, I think we should consider that as an option. And then also, I wanted to ask about the next 2019-20 calendar and we could be revising that so that, I mean, as much as everyone likes coming back after Labor Day, I think we need to consider coming back before.
The new calendar does.
Okay.
All of my labor, we can enforce it. High schools done, experiment didn't work. Answer your questions, because I think about Veterans Day. They had done it at one time and became very contentious. I think if you're going to do Veterans Day, you have to harbor the veterans. In the other district where I did it, we didn't do it every side. I sat down and talked with them. It was not easy to do, but it can be done, but if it's something the board wants to do, I'd rather do it in a different fashion. I'd rather use it in a PD, but the problem with that is where it falls in the calendar when we do it. But if the board wants to do it as a Veterans Day, as a school day, I would say we have to do it as a Veterans Day, honestly. That's something I'd wanted for a year. Because it is, you have to do it every day. That would be my only suggestion. Bill, we talked about that a few times.
We invited a number of veterans about 10 years ago, from all races of service, and our argument to them was, would it be more meaningful for children, for students, to have veterans actually come in and put out programs that speak to what Veterans Day is really about versus having kids go to the mall for the days they're off? While there was, I think almost who personally understood the concept behind it, they still felt that, that then felt it was, still would be disrespectful. So as Sal said, I think if the board passed this as a goal, certainly would be the kind of thing that would be quite a good one. So as Sal said, I think if the board passed this as a goal, certainly would be the kind of, quite a good, uh, process. You have Tom Sade, obviously, or you can do a post-side of that, or you can start a conversation.
I don't think it's, many districts do, they do Columbus Day as well, but it's just kind of traditionally not done. The Columbus Day is, it's not as honest, obviously, but the Veterans Day, it takes some time. The other thing is, is we were counting the days at the end of the year, to be sure. So that's where we cut as much as we could.
Need further discussion?
That's a good question. If we improve this calendar, a sense that I'm getting is maybe the new calendar, it's gonna move on, wants to talk with the vets. Is that something, I just want to get a sense of your thinking? Because we have Tom Sade, he'd be a great with the humans. And to work with, just to give us an idea, I've got the PTO, parents at a meeting I can talk with and start that.
Maybe it's more from pride.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work from his work, but maybe it's more from pride.
Let me, let me, I'll, I'll, let's try it again, because everybody around us is, maybe, has a different feeling.
If you don't need the day now, so now it's more just for learning.
It would be, as Bill said, to bring it in and make it, not that they don't make it meaningful now, it's just a different occurrence. The theme will be different.
So we have a motion up, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Motion carries.
Thank you, my parents appreciate you being in the circle.
And now we are at the superintendent's report.
Kim, can you wait?
Yep, I'm an arbitration lawyer.
Yes.
Oh, Admiral, you're on the agenda.
Hey.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm gonna think back here. We had done six, we've just completed the sixth set of interviews for administrative hiring. And we recently announced we all received an interview suite, a recent one, which is the Assistant Principal at Roger Parkland School. We had completed rounds of interviews at the captain level now for the Director of Curriculum Assessment and Assistant Superintendent of School Development. We just completed those, and the preliminary rounds of the sheltered principal position have also completed. So we're moving along judiciously and hope to at least finalize what we have left at this time. We are continuing to get some retirements, resignations, that kind of thing, which may also be just additional vacancies, but right now, that's on the plate. We are making progress on the famous whiteboard, which is the one in my suite there in the conference room with currently known available vacancies. We've made some good progress in hiring into shortage areas particularly. I think Special Ed has done a really good job of getting ahead of things early this year. And the typical difficult ones, like the math, chemistry, statistics, those, we're making some good progress on those stuff. So that continues to pace. Summer school is, I believe, if I wanna say, fully staffed. I, I've told you a couple of times, it's about 300 people and less than none, with all kinds of staff of all varieties. So we're just putting the finishing touches on support services, safety areas, nurses down at the end of our summer school. It's a little bit more complicated for this, this year because the elementary summer school is on one location, well, it's gonna be three locations in the end. Rather than having the summer school in the individual schools or being clustered together and have to last to the different reasons. So we've faced some new challenges this year, I'm trying to get that all sorted out, but it looks like we're kind of in a home stretch, just in the meantime, like that. The rest of the summer for my team, we'll be continuing to fill the certified staff members. And then we'll turn to the support staff probably in July, August, to get those people all in the door. We typically experience a lot of high turnover, particularly in the parent tutor union, so we'll be looking for those on top of the end of July, August, both times. It's not on the list, but all of a sudden, we're starting negotiations with several groups. Teachers start tomorrow. Coming tomorrow, right? And, yep, I'm sorry, secretary, secretary of teachers, doesn't teach a world. Secretaries start tomorrow. And then towards the end of the month, we're gonna do two teacher groups, school lunch and safety advocates. And attorney and attorney of the stand alone, the administrators, and that we will just be getting requested information, so that one's gonna start to move pretty quickly. And that one has statutory deadlines, so the mediation and attrition towards the end of August, beginning of September, so that one will be kind of, you know, a little bit over the summer. So that's just a few things to make.
Mr. Pauli.
If I could ask, Kim, in regard to the Director of Curriculum and the new assistant, you know, superintendent?
Yes.
Is there thoughts or consideration as far as their employment, as far as their next step? And by that, is it possible succession plan for Dr. Sale later when that time comes?
I'm not sure, I understand the question.
I guess my question is, is that, is, are the, are the people that are being hired, is it, is it a consideration of the hiring? That they perhaps may be in line to succeed Dr. Sale sometimes?
Sure, yeah, I think that's a fair consideration. I don't know that it's one that's been articulated away that clearly, but it needs something that is on the radar.
First, we're looking at the certified. We're looking at that as part of, part of the recruitment, that has certified ones.
I mean, I will say, in the time that I've been in this job, that, that issue of succession planning and cross training has always been primary. Because I think for a long time, we didn't do a very good job with that, so I think that's something that everybody thinks about. And where, where people will career advance as they come to us.
Joe, can I, can I copy a lease, please?
Sure. I'm advancing through the technology and copier lease. I've gotta go to the city council as an ad hoc, which hasn't scheduled yet, sometime this month. I choose out to Jean Talley, the city side, we have the dates, it was on the actual list. Again, moving as explained to the board, we're gonna kind of do a contract extension of the copiers, kind of a partial replacement of our current vendor. They are a bid vendor on the cap, which is a valid bid metrics for the board. We are gonna extend. We've got pretty well-integrated software on these are copiers. And we do think there's some life left in some, so we're gonna kind of extend, blend and extend if you will. It's gonna save us some dollars because of the additional cuts we could see with the technology. Capital account with the city, which they did reduce down this year as part of budget, which is, we will have to mitigate that. And what we're gonna do is, kind of, send these copiers out, get releases, because that's obviously some middle schools. As Manuel was pointing out with Doc Cam, so things will fall into that lease. We did, got a part of the elementary lease, we did about three figures.
While you're doing this, anything on the modules?
Portable bid openings are Tuesday. The boards be happy, we have many, many bidders from all, all over the country, I'd say, at this point. So we're gonna get narrowed down on timeline. You know, we're a little mine close to kind of a one, I'm talking about the month already. We might have a little bit of shift from over there, close to 50 students. A little more until we bid something in actual timeline. But I am very, very confident that you just will come in and be able to, no problem, I think. With the amount we've got bidding, and we've got vendors that didn't bid on the last cycle, they wanna get in this time, so I, I think we're a really competitive bidding environment. So next meeting, I'll bid total, some good results, and I'll have a big headcount.
So it's, we may go with this attempt, we're gonna admit the students.
Yeah, thankfully, it's only 50, I mean, if it was more than that, I'd be really concerned. But in the end, you know, you're gonna have eight nice classrooms out the back there, it's gonna be a nice air condition, all enclosed. And as Paulie pointed out, last year, it'd be 80% reversal, thanks to Mr. Conthe and Mr. Ferguson, so that's, that's a million dollar prize, about only gonna pay off $20,000, so that's, that's, take that in. I know, I'm sure that's 16. Right.
You know, that's where's the drive.
There is a massive crane that has to go, it's making this complicated, it's, I'm told, in large portable cranes can exist because it's a massive pick for the top of buildings, so it's, but I, I think we're gonna see some good things.
T-DAC.
Um, as the board will recall, T-DAC is the subcommittee of the board that gives the curriculum and all interrelated to that. The most recent T-DAC meeting, only two large agenda items. One was the findings recommendations from the literacy committee, and the other, it was a new vision for professional development. So in fairness to you, not half the usual management, just gonna hit the home piece on this, because it involved early on the issues. As the board will recall, because of budgetary constraints, we were forced to have reduction force to key areas. Most notably, the language arts specials. So it's not surprising that the first recommendation from the committee is re-estate the language arts specials. And that is the plan we go forward. We also reduced paraprofessionals at the elementary level, grade one. They're being put back in a little bit different manner. You heard the term tonight, T-N-A-W-S-R-B-I, scientific research-based intervention. What it really means is, this child's not getting it, somebody comes in and helps, that's intervention. So they're being repurposed to look at an SRB approach, and currently, the thinking is one per building. The idea of, of ramping up fines, we've always had some.
May I?
I'm sorry. I was, I'm referring to, it's all of this, the literacy committee, one per parity. When we cut the language arts specials down to about six and a half, we also reduced the math coaches to the same number. So the idea of, we're bringing the math coaches back to where they were last year, the language arts specials back to where they were last year. And there are 33 or so full-time, part-time pairs, only move back one per building. How many were there before that?
It's a different position.
Oh, we reduced 30 some odd people?
I think so.
Yeah, so this is a new vision, as Ted was saying, that they, one per building as an SRBI.
Full, full-time one per, four, kind of 33.
As, for. People need to share those kind of stuff, so we bring a little bit more stability to the district. The idea of implementing a very structured finance program, the focus on K-4-2, the primary grade levels. Of course, if kids aren't functioning at that level, aren't strong enough to finance at a higher grade level, there's still gonna be interventions around that as well. The instructional pike you referred about, the request to change the annualization value of pi, and bring increased flexibility to the allotment. I think it was just about unanimous, unanimously have thought across the district that what's on, that timetable is important. It's just, it's too rigid, and as schools try to implement it, we have kind of a fractured implementation model. This is now, we have more teacher voice, giving schools more autonomy to implement all pieces in that protocol, but do it in a way that makes most sense at the building level. We've been working with South Street, for example, is one example, the idea of differentiated approach, departmentalization at the fourth and fifth grade level. Kelly maybe takes a nap, and science kind of approach, and I take an English, language arts, literacy, and social studies approach. So we've got some feedback on that, we're still looking at three years of data, as we've always talked about, it gives that longitudinal trend. The idea is, between mine, the SRBI process, it's gonna help with that innovation. And lastly, again, big ticket items, 10 years ago, Sal had a study commissioned by UCLA to look at our English language number population. They related program, they developed foundations, but because of financial constraints, we wouldn't want to do that. The committee came forward and said, we need to look at it again because of the number of students, they increased the ELLs. So the idea of putting in an English language, about English language department at the K-5 level, and some lead teachers to help with some teaching. The other big idea, and I'll, we'll stop for a minute. You may recall, Sal mentioned a while back, Sal said he'd come in, out of the field, my work was at the school level. And we've had, there were concerns raised by teachers, by administrators, by board members, by parents, around our professional development program. And so Sal said, if you come back and do the vision for PD. We put together a wonderful committee, very robust team of folks. Our former insert in our teacher evaluation thing, it was a part of that, was two and a half pages. The new one's fifty pages long. So again, instead of working you through this, let me just hit the home piece again. Something called open space learning, it's very different, and it's, I'm doing what I'm right, doing right now to people, I'm doing it to you. Open space learning is we bring teams of folks together around a common theme. Typically, they self-identify as an area of need, so we're saying, we need to do the work on phonics. And they say we have a real problem with phonies and phonological awareness, not really pull that apart. This group right here all has the same problem. We come together, sometimes it's called flocking, birds of a feather, we have the same issue. So the flock comes together, and each of us takes the leadership role to facilitate that. We've done this a few times in the past, each time we've done it, it was our highest rated professional learning initiative. We're banning the term training, something due to animal. Professional development really is going to the professional learning. Pedagogy is how kids learn, androgogy is the science of how dogs learn. It's an anthropological approach, really pushing the idea of professional collaboration, so we can really partner and get the collective wisdom of the group. Making much more use of pipeline learning, there's no reason why everybody has to come together. We can certainly do it digitally, with no problem at all, people just probably got into that already, just by, just an actual course of events. Creating adult learning communities that are flexible, they come together as needed, and then they break it apart. And lastly, the idea of self-correcting, it doesn't always have to be in the group. It could be Kelly's working on a particular new initiative that she must, she's worn out, she'd be tied to a professional growth plan. That becomes part of her teacher evaluation model. So here's the area that I identify that I don't do well yet, called the growth model. But if I spend a year of study, I'll do a much better job. Her media supervisor, she partner, and at the end of the year, Kelly has been able to really ramp up her burning. It is a much better practice charge as a result of that. Final thought on this, we've gotten, and again, give credit to the committee, wonderful thinkers. The state has notified us, it's a downed state model, and then they'll be disseminating it now to all the Alhans district groups. And they'd like to disseminate it to the 169 districts throughout Connecticut. And then we got notification, I think it was yesterday, that CDA, the Connecticut Education Association, also wants to identify it as a model of collaboration between labor and management. So we feel really good about this, it's a nice way, it's a clear, a lot of thumbs up on this. When Sal and I first worked with the teacher evaluation committee, we said, we could do a simple majority, or we could do a super majority. And we liked to go for a super majority, so everybody makes sure that we're all on the same page. Each time they voted, you know, left the room, so there was no collusion or anything like that. So this was not only a super majority, it was 100%, again, this in terms of this is the model we're on, the use we're following.
The challenge of the implementation, and we talked, I talked to the board, creating positions, because it needs to be the business of what we do. You may recall, when the teachers spoke, there was time they needed development, and things that they feel felt important, that permits, permits that to happen. It also allows some of our teachers, who are tremendously capable of conducting for PD, we don't have to go and find experts to do it. We can then use them in the district. So we're excited about it. Growing out is gonna be a challenge, but it's, it's, the base, it's there, and it's a great place to grow. I can send it to you, like, try.
Yeah.
Yeah, do they have any questions regarding any of that information?
Check it down, it'd be a quiz later on.
Okay.
Well, just one more thing, Chris, as a share. Thank you for the update on literacy. And though I appreciate you spoken words, we have some written summary of those ones.
There is a summary of recommendations. Sal asked me to talk about T-DAC tonight, not the actual, the committee. So this was based on the last meeting that we had. But there's a whole.
But I had said to the board, we had the recommendations. I'll put in the information, but.
Beyond information, we're gonna need to discuss the waiver. So information. Yep, para, para educators' arbitration.
Ready to go?
Ready to go.
Ready to go, this year. The decision came in, and we prevailed in most categories, so I just wanna walk you through that. So you'll recall, this is the contract for the para educators, which includes tutors and paras. And the original contract expired last year. So the first year of the contract, new contract would be 2016-17. Second year, the current right now is 17-18. Second year, the current right now is 17-18, and the third year is 18-19. So we'll be in negotiations with them next year, for 2020. So, the award was as follows, four wages. We had agreed to a scheduled increase, and the award was for step plus point seven-five in each year, so year one, year two, and year three. We fought over retroactivity. There is no retroactivity to the first year. So if you, if this makes sense, the raise goes into place in year one, but they don't get the increase, so that's the floor then for year two. So year two was also step plus point seven-five, and that is this year, so that raise will be paid retroactive to July 1 of this year. Does that make sense? So the increase from last year is sort of set before for the next increase. And in year three, it will also be step plus point seven-five. So in practical numbers, that is my balance.
For, for this, this year, current $146,000, total 2.3%.
Right. So, that was, we were happy about the retroactivity piece, because that was a real source of contention. Now, with regard to the health insurance, there were also some interesting rewards. The premium cost share at the end of the last contract was 11%, that's if the parents are to pay 11%. The arbitrators awarded an increase in year one, which would be this year, to 12%. Now, it's not retroactive, so I don't know how, I don't think we can actually make it happen this year, but it is 12% on 30. And then for next year, which is 18-19, they also awarded for the board, an additional increase of 1% to 13%. So they're going to go from 11% to 13% in common terms, I think, by the last year of this contract. And they also, we, you'll remember, we had agreed to move from an HSA where we put cash in, to an HRA where it's basically a credit system. So the amount of money that the board contributes goes into basically an account, and it works sort of like a debt if there's no cash. So at the end of the day, someone will tell the district, we don't have cash to take with us, this is credit, which that creates. The panel actually awarded the board's request to reduce the contribution amount, and it went down from, went to the last page here. We were funding it at about 75%, we're now funding it at about 60%. So there is a $2,000 and a $4,000 deductible, and the employer contribution is now going to drop, it will drop from $1,500 to $1,200 per single, and it will drop from $3,000 to maybe down to $400. So you will now be funding 60% of the deductible essentially, as opposed to the little 75 we were funding before. So that was another award of the board's last best offer. The HR, the shift to the HRAs where we'll see significant savings, and that is in large part because that is a group of high mobility, so we do have a lot of people that come into the group, get the HSA cash, we're used to have it, and then we leave us in September, October, and we're telling them, we do have that. So we worked for a long time in negotiating different alternatives that would allow us to have a little bit more security, and that's how we got to the HRAs. So we're going to see some significant savings, I believe, after a year of experience on that piece. And then there will be this added savings now, a reduction being out there.
Question.
Is that true?
So we're working right now for the combination. So part of what, right, so part of what we need to do, because that happens, it's effective September 1st, our plans, so that's when the premium increase will go into place and also the changes from the HSA to the HRAs. So it's going to take us a little bit of time, we have to do some real education on that piece for all of our members, so that they understand what the changes, and we've started that process already with the union president, who's already been working with us on who the members are and how we're best going to set up the information flow for them, so that they understand.
This is just for parents?
Just for parents, yeah.
Are we turning it on?
So we're entering negotiations now with the others, two of the challenges.
Nice shout, Tim, thank you. SEDEX is our standard for premium extension, one year we could put this out for information for the board. The second item is the school lunch increase, I just want to hand out to the board, that's a state mandated increase, we run our calculations, so I couldn't do a six-only nickel, actually it's a dime, I hate increasing a dime, and that's my mind cost and stuff like that, the families, so the nickel increase, come back next meeting for the full board, except please put a dime on nickel, nickel increase. 2018, 19, board meeting dates. If anybody wants, September 12th and September 26th. Uh-uh, that's... Yeah, yeah, it's on the 19th. Okay, and we have the 18, 19, it's probably a short thing.
Just a reminder that at the next board meeting, your next board meeting is when we reach and recognize those who have non-standing service with the district and are retiring, so that will be the next meeting, which is the last one.
Oh, okay.
Is it a start before?
Yeah, yeah, usually, I think we meet and start at the little recession.
Retiree recession at 6:30.
Right, and then we start at 7:00 in the district.
Okay, and we have the spotlight your school discussion.
So, Dr. Salem, if you're going to spotlight your school, can we have the board event meeting at that school?
Sure answers, yes. Problem is, we don't have all the equipment and all of that, we don't, that's it.
Can we talk louder?
Yeah, seating gets a little challenging, we've got a lot of cap tables, I mean, yes, yes, you can do it, it just gets a little complicated with seating, chairs and stuff, not impossible.
Maybe we should have a meeting.
So you want to have most of the meetings in front of the road.
Say once a month.
I'm in.
So that just, you know, first, the first meeting in a month, spotlight your school, and just lock, so the next, the next year, we have a first.
I just think the public participation, you know, people are not coming to the school and you can't... That's the only thing, otherwise...
So the chair, I think, I think that I get what Mr. Holliday's going with, and I think that maybe there's something that we could do in order to just, as a board, be more accessible to each specific school, and not just wait for like the coming to us, but come to them. Maybe something that we can, other than each one of us being assigned specific schools, maybe some sort of a showcase that we could do where we, as a board, decide that we're going to visit schools.
I didn't count the number of meetings that we have, but we have about sixteen schools. Yeah, so we probably have twenty, twenty meetings, so every single meeting will be at a different school.
My thought process would be is that we could go to every school in a two-year period. So one year, one, one meeting a month, and then spotlight your school, the next is here, and then you alternate next year. Thought process, that's all.
Is there a certain rotation that's...
I think she just, yeah, she's, Debbie just took it, she just rotates it. So what am I hearing here? The board is requesting that we have a spotlight school for which endeavor may be a little challenging, right, Chris? So let's look at the board view, for example, that we spotlight them, the meeting will be there on October, November, March, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I would like, I would like the board to consider that at every other meeting, we have the spotlight your school program, space permit.
So I guess my point, to you, why would we represent our board wanting to go to one? Because those members are supposed to be reported back to us each time that they go.
See, unfortunately, I, and I fully admit it, that I am responsible for Shelter Rock, I have gone to Shelter Rock, but I have very rarely visited any other school. So this will give me an opportunity to go to that school as part of my Board of Education commitment. I mean, everyone has a school that's responsible for it, realistically, how many, other than that school, how many visit others? Two other board members, three other board members, four other board members. So why, actually, my question is, is why not?
Right.
Right. And if we're spotlighting their school, and they should take pride in that school, maybe we could even make it quarter to seven, so we can take a tour of the school prior to the meeting, and then visit every school on a two-year basis. I don't understand the hesitancy, to be honest.
I, I just think the only concern is just logistics and making sure we announce it clearly, because I think when they're always here the same two Wednesdays, general public comments, staff members comments, sometimes, you know, people want to come for a particular reason, so that's the only thing, we just have to be really very clear about communication of where we are against these, that I think we're getting also.
We can just look up the high school, right, going to tour, if you feel like...
Yep, that's possible. Is that something we pursue? Mr. Chair, can you look at it? Absolutely. I guess I'll make an assignment, we'll have to figure out the schedule, these many schools.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is just information, so at the next meeting, you know, the first meeting is, this is information you can use, and the next meeting you make your, I have overall discussion on, and make a decision as to what you put into dip.
Right.
So we have time to think about.
Right, we need to, yeah, we have to put all the logistics of it together, and what we, we super plan, actually, promotion for. All right? I'm actually, if you have more for, I'm going to throw off to the next one, I'll do a bit more for the chairman's report on the next meeting, so I don't have anything further. Board reports, communications and comments. Mr. Mars.
So, I just wanted to share with my fellow board members that I was thinking about our special needs education population and researching things that other boards throughout the country do in order to work better with that community. And a lot of them have set up acceptus, which are committees in their PTOs for the special education students. And I reached out to Mr. Metzinger from the citywide PTO about this idea, he was very receptive and very excited about the possibility of setting up a special education subcommittee to the citywide PTO. And basically, what that would do, and I got this information off of the National Association of Parent Teacher Associations, that the purpose of it would be to bring together the special families in schools to foster partnerships in school setting, in the school setting for the community, and commit that all children receiving special education services will be empowered to reach their potential within the school district. You know, as what happens sometimes being a special education parent, once your child receives a specialized educational plan, you kind of become a man in your own island, because that's a specialized educational plan, so it's very, it's a very societal educational experience for that parent as well. And this would kind of give them an opportunity to come together and actually meet other parents who are in different, you know, points of their journey as special education parents, you get to meet a parent that's dealing with a bit greater versus a parent dealing small, you know, in high school and stuff, and kind of prepare for what the challenges are, and also come together with the district and talk about how they can support the work that's being done. So, Mr., like I said, Mr. Metzinger said that he would be willing and excited to work on that and reach out to Mrs. Trump as well about it, about possibly appointing someone on the group to represent her office there, and just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thank you.
And I have information to share, maybe you may have forgotten the benefits of...
Okay. Anybody else?
I attended the study of the PTO meeting last night, and I was reminded that there's still that concern about voting when schools open, voting, that there's, I guess, a couple different answers that are open, so that, you know, it's concerned by the parents, though people coming to school during most of the time, I forget, whether it was they did municipal elections or, yeah, maybe like the, I'm not sure, but I did, I sent you, said that I would give the answer about this, because I asked you about it when I went to the neighborhood also.
What happens, what happens is, well, during the, during the presidential, and then his four schools that they vote, go down, those four schools are fired, you don't even have people in school on the election. But when that municipal, there's, they have, and we have people there, we don't have police at every one, and they don't provide anymore, we ask for them, they don't provide, so we have our safety apps, we're in a long, so, and we're not permitted, as in the past, you know, you used to put gates up?
Yeah, we used to, yeah.
Fire marshal, so you could kind of keep people in here, so we have to, that has been the challenge, you know, Joe has worked with the custodians and that's been the issue.
That's why they keep them on.
Yeah.
That's why they keep them on.
Yeah, you could put them up, they said, but you can't lock them.
Okay.
It doesn't, because anybody can just open them, that's why you don't see people.
So the only way to really do it would be to have, push our doors to exit the school, but not to enter.
And depends which school, where it is too, someone much more secure, I don't know, Shelter Rock is a little more problematic, the way it is. And I've tried to talk to, I don't do it anymore, like move it, it's just like the Vatican over here is, you know, Sinai over here, so I didn't even go there, we just try to figure it out.
Initially, the primaries in August, I believe, since August, so I think, I was proposed for election, I, and I forget which election it is, on cycle, there was, there was a presidential, presidential, some falls off cycle.
There was an off cycle.
Could be a physical bonding.
We could always look at an increase in, and we can always take our, our, our contract bars, or a conditional person, so it's going to get, so it's another person.
I just wondered, we hear...
Well, you know, like, when the, the study would put this guy closer to that area for voting, I forget what year it was now, we could certainly have a second, it's not, for one day, that's not impossible. It sounds like any uniform officers used to challenge in general, like high school, you have, you have two SRO stations, you've got three on the parking lot, and given that, you know, you have a full staff, mostly it's not...
Presidential law, I think. Yeah, pretty much, I'm sure, the primary is all, is that we're, the presidential, now, this, we closed, we're closed this, next, next year on, on election day for the presidential, so, we're closed on November 8th, that's a people, that's what I'm saying, because the teachers are in, but we avoid those five schools.
November 6th.
Six, yeah, so it's not just the presidential. It's only when we have kids in school, it's the obvious reason, if we're having school and it's not one of these big elections, somebody can come on to it. I guess the current, we spoke at, it was coming, that's the...
Yeah. So November 6th this year, which is...
That'll be the, that'll be the state, that'll be the state elections.
The kids will not be in, and the four schools that they vote at, we avoid PD here as well.
There's parking issues.
Yeah, so we don't have, because of parking issue.
Right, right, easy answer.
Any other communications or comments?
Yeah, I do, I'm sorry, well, that's because it came up, and we did, we finally got the engineers and the fire marshal to approve the fence and the... We did, we finally got the engineers and the fire marshal to move the fence in the back. We had to come in and get it.
At the east gate?
In the interim, we've had to put a police.
They are across the side.
They're going to put that fence up, the game, so that'll be secure back there.
Is that it? Okay, uh, so we need a motion to go. Executive session made by Mr. Molinaro, executed by Mr. Santos. A little favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Enter executive session.